All right. I'd like to call to order the November 12, 2020 business meeting and ask our county administrator, Gary Schmidt, to please take the roll.
Thank you, Chair. We'll start with staff support today. Stephen Matcor, County Council, Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Rich Marvin, Public and Government Affairs. Roll call. Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher. He said here. Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are holding this meeting virtually. If you're joining us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live, or you can comment via email at bcc@clackamas.us. That's bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and the area from which you are from. And Gary, I'm going to turn it to you.
Thank you, Chair. We're going to start with an elections update. We have Clackamas County Clerk Sherri Hall to provide that update. Please go ahead, Sherri.
Good morning. And finally, we're wrapping up the November 3 election. Today, we have about 20 temporary people in, and we are duplicating 4,180 ballots. And those numbers will be added to the tally on our website by the end of today or tomorrow. We're not sure if it will be done today. The signature challenges with no sig, bad sig, who got a letter from us, have to be cured by 5:00 PM November 17, which is next Tuesday. And we must certify our election results by November 23rd. But we possibly could do it on the November 18th, which is the day after signature cure deadline, if we have everything else done. And that will be it for the November 3 election. We also held our recall election in Oregon, for the Oregon City Recall on Tuesday. We all got out of here by 8:30 election night, which was really early. It was nice. The results are on our webpage, and those will be updated also as some of the second look ballots get processed. We'll certify that election by November 24th. I'm sorry. We'll certify that one by November 30th, but the signature cure is November 24th. So does anybody have any questions?
Why do you mention duplicate ballots? What does that mean?
That means when the ballot was removed from the envelope, it was mailed back to us, and there was damage on the ballot, which means the machine could not read it. So it was either a tear, a cut, food damage, something that did something to the way the machine reads the markings of the choices. It's the actual ballot. And so those are all put aside until after Election Day. And we actually can fix, we duplicate the damaged ballot exactly onto a brand-new ballot. We have a few observers back there watching, and there's three tables that are close enough to the windows, but they can watch exactly what we do. It's an exact duplication of the way the voter voted the ballot.
All right. Thank you. Paul.
Yeah, Sherri, I imagine that would also include a ballot that was damaged in the mail.
That's true. Some of that happens.
Right. So those things are sometimes, you know, very innocent, if you will. They just happen. The question I had was with regards to the ones that were polled for signature verification. Typically, what is the amount of, or the percentage, however, whatever metric you want to use, of those people that should respond in time to have their ballot counted?
Um, I don't know that, I don't have that number in front of me, and I don't know that we keep track of that. But the signature challenge lists were available yesterday. We had two requests for a list. One was House District 52, and I'm not sure what the other one was. But yesterday was a holiday, and so some of the other counties and us could prepare the email to respond and set it for the time to go out, which would have been yesterday. And I actually had a few phone calls and some text messages from people who are doing that, because they pick up the list from us, then they can go knock on doors and ask the voter to do the cure and get their ballot in, so that if there's a close race, possibly close the gap on that race.
Yeah.
And that was a law that was changed a few years back by the legislature to allow campaigns to know which ballots are possibly going to be resolved for counting. And when that first started, some voters didn't like it. It's like, how do they know my ballot signature didn't match? But it is a law now, and so we do release the list five days ahead.
Hello from my office below.
I don't know what that was. Well, thank you, Sherri. I just, I do want to just let everyone know in the audience that I remember several years ago, my signature, you know, went through that process. My signature didn't match. And I was, I would say that it was a very seamless process. You know, I went through the procedure, and my ballot was counted, and it just goes to show that, you know, that the system effectively is designed to really authorize or make sure that all ballots are valid as best as possible. So.
Right.
Want to point that out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming today, and have a great day. Thank you. Gary?
Next, we have wildfire update from Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander of our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead, Nancy.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. So we have several things on our recovery that I want to report to you today, and then I have some photos I'm going to have Christina show you. So individual assistance is now registered here in Clackamas County. It's 2,283. It keeps creeping up just a little bit. Household assistance eligible is 74. Other needs assistant eligible is 120. An individual and household program is 146 that are eligible out of those 20, almost 2,300. Clackamas County EOC is also participating on November 16 and after-action review by Estacada. We are giving a presentation there of our role in what was going on in the city of Estacada, as well as some of the surrounding areas there, which are unincorporated. And then we're going to use part of that process in our after-action report as well, which we're getting underway with FEMA, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And we'll start sending out some surveys and getting that moving. We have distributed from the EOC some more PPE to the businesses and community-based organizations for those that may need them, not only for COVID, but also for some of the wildfire issues that have been coming up. There may be still some smoke damage and those type of things where people need those or helping them with due cleanup. So we also have some small grants that are going out and under review, which is also for COVID. I'm sorry, this is all getting mixed up a little bit with all of our recovery effort. So we received over 200 applications for small business, for small businesses for those. And then we're also getting ready to do $500,000 to childcare providers, and those applications are going to be due soon as well. So when we talk about our recovery effort and the economy, we're kind of combining those together with this, with the wildland fire efforts. For sheltering, we have a total of seven individual families that are being sheltered from, that are being sheltered in Clackamas County because of the wildland fires. The Red Cross is sheltering two families, and an additional five families are being sheltered by the county social services. We're also reaching out through our CBOs into the faith groups to see if there are more families that are in need. We have, we suspect that there are more out there. We're just trying to find them. Because of COVID and the way, whenever we had to do sheltering for this particular fire, people were being sheltered in so many different places that it's been hard to catch up with some of that. For what we're doing for debris right now, we are identifying priorities, properties for upcoming cleanup phases at ODOT's request, as we are waiting to see if FEMA is going to approve the PPR, PPDR, which is the private property debris removal. And we are supporting several discussions, discussions at the Board of State level about debris removal and that contracting. ODOT is moving forward with contracting for debris removal. And we've been asked several questions, and we've been trying to answer those and also get more information so we can be more prepared here at the local level. The household hazardous waste cleanup is now underway, and the cleanup crews are in the field. And we actually had Evan Polk and Matt Rosell went out, and I think that a field was out in the field on Tuesday. And Christina, if you could bring those pictures up, I'll show you a few pictures of what they're finding out there and what they're doing. So we're hopefully, they will be done, we think, within the next week here in Clackamas County. So this first picture is just something I wanted to show you, is some of the sites that they're coming up on and what they're having to do. You'll see those big white Xs on propane tanks or other things that are hazardous. And they actually come in and mark those. In a few minutes, in a minute, I'll show you where they actually can line them up. But that means those have to be removed. And when they have the Xs on them, that means they've been decommissioned, and they're ready to be moved. Next slide. So this is where they have pulled several out from a site, and you can see those are, you know, gas and propane. Again, they put the X on them to show that they are ready to be removed. And all of those there that are sitting there are decommissioned. And then someone comes along and picks all of those up. Next slide, please. The other thing that they're doing is marking dangerous trees that need to come down. So again, they mark those with white Xs. Any dangerous trees that may have been in the way for the team to come in to do removal of hazardous waste were taken down before that team came in, just so that they can be safe. But this is a group of trees that are dangerous on a property that need to come down. And next slide. And when they're complete and they're done, they put a sign in the yard or on the property that says it's been complete, and there is a list there of things that have been done and things that they might, you know, want to, to follow up on. And that is all of the photos I have, and that is my update for wildland fire.
That's, that's pretty amazing. I see oxygen and settling tanks there. Somebody's doing some welding. But I think, you know, how they finish that up with the sign is pretty, pretty great. People should feel confident. Of course, that does not mean that there isn't still hazardous material there, like asbestos in the flooring and various other things, but it's a good start, and it's free.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, there's still hazardous things there. Even the ash can be hazardous, and that debris removal has to be done separately. But at least you get those big things out of the way if you signed up for that.
Yeah, I also hear that there is some effort to take, to keep people out of money, and that is saying that the ashes needed to be tested for hazardous material, which is not true. I mean, it's not true that you have to pay somebody to take a sample of it and take it to a lab and test it. I heard that's one of the things that's going on. Paul?
Yeah, Nancy, thanks for your report today. I can only imagine how much work you have, and that's really what my concern is to some degree. Knowing that, you know, 10 years ago in January, we had the Lolo Pass, the Sandy floods, the Sandy River floods and so forth. And I know that created work for your office for years, years. And knowing we've got two emergencies that'll probably take years and years to resolve, plus all the preparation and normal work you all do, that I imagine that your staff are probably taxed. And I'm, as we approach budget season, I imagine that, you know, evaluating the workload going forward for your office is something that we're going to have to take in consideration. So I look forward to that conversation, but I just want to just recognize the good work, the hard work, and the hours it must, must be involved in, and fulfilling all the responsibilities that you're now taxed with. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else of Nancy? Gary, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Next is COVID-19 updates. We have Dr. Skara President, our Clackamas County Health Officer, who will give this update. Please go ahead, Dr. President.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Christina, if you could bring up the slides that we sent to you, please. So I, I know that Nancy gave you a preview of some of our data on Tuesday. I do have data in more of a slide format here, and I can just let you know we are, we are certainly challenged in public health right now. Go on to the next slide, please. So this is our current, our most current graph of our cases. So this is total cases per week since the, since the end of July. And you can see the steep, steep increase that we've had over the last two weeks. As you, as you're all aware, we were included in a pause recommended by the governor starting yesterday in response to the sharp increase in cases in Oregon, in our county, and it's reflected nationally. We certainly have seen increased cases as the weather's gotten cooler and people have gone inside since Halloween as well. We've seen the spike, and there are many potential causes for it. But those, those indoor social gatherings, as well as work, going to work sites without, workplaces without proper, proper infection control protocols are really where we're seeing the most rise. Next slide, please. The pause guidance, I'm not going to go into in a lot of detail. I believe that Nancy spoke with you around that on Tuesday. But it is effective for the whole tri-county area, not only because of us being connected regionally and geographically, as well as people passing back and forth, but because we are really all meeting the metrics that are concerning, that, that really, you know, I am in support of this pause. We need to really shift gears and get the disease spread under control again. We have done an amazing job in Clackamas County and throughout Oregon of keeping control over the disease spread until the last couple of weeks, and we really need to shift gears to get it back under control. The pause looks at limits on numbers of people in areas of social interaction, like restaurants, bars, and other meeting places, as well as, you know, a big cry to our public to please limit your individual social, social interactions to small gatherings, if any, ideally just with your household. The idea, you know, we know, we know many, many people are going to want to gather with family and friends for Thanksgiving holiday and holidays beyond that. If you can really limit interactions and stay home and basically quarantine for two weeks prior to that, then we can really do a lot to control the spread. Any of these gatherings for holidays, we know we're going to have increased spread. But if we can decrease infections in the 14 days prior to a holiday, we can certainly decrease how much is going to be spreading in those, in those times of gathering. Next slide, please. I wanted to talk a bit about our school metrics. So we currently, according to the Oregon Department of Education website, are in this transition zone. Christina, if you just want to push the next slide. But much of that is due to us actually being behind on our, on our case processing. So if, once the data is reviewed, I believe that actually last week, we did get over 200 per 100,000. Our current state says that it's a 195.3, I believe. But we are also lagging in our processing of cases at this point. So once that data is reviewed, and then certainly going through this week, I do anticipate the new data on Monday to show that we are in the over 200 per 100,000 in the last two weeks, and we will recommend to schools to go back to comprehensive distance learning. Next slide, please. Lots of deep breaths here. So this is what I have as our current case rate for the last two weeks is 202.5 per 100,000 over the last two weeks, and 10% positivity rate of our tests in Clackamas County. All right, next slide, please. I also wanted to show you, our epidemiologist took our data and did some projections for the future. These projections, the yellow line is assuming a 1.1 RNOT or infection rate, meaning for each one individual who is a case, they would infect 1.1 other individuals. The middle orange line is for 1.2, and the upper red line is at 1.4. So the upper one would assume that each case would infect 1.4 other people, which, of course, you can't infect 1.4, but if you look at it over big numbers, that's, that's our, that's how we do our mathematics. This last week, we have been at 1.3. That prior week, we really saw spikes, not, not this, not going from today a week back, but a week prior to that, we were likely higher than that. But we currently, with these projections, if we don't significantly decrease spread, we're going to be looking at being somewhere between the orange and red lines as far as our weekly case counts here in Clackamas County. Okay, next slide, please. And then I wanted to also bring up our metrics, and I don't think that I'm recommending any movement into increased phased reopening. But I do need to point out that the percent of cases with follow-up in the last 24 hours has significantly decreased in Clackamas County. We're down at 55%. And that really is, we, we had a steep rise in cases. We've had a backlog of being able to follow up on those cases in public health, and now sort of each day, we are having to roll over cases. I think we are, we have, we've settled out so that our backlog is not increasing at this time, but we're still working on, on getting to the backlog. So what that means for the public is that they may not hear from public health for a few days at this point. We are doing everything we can to increase staffing, to pull staffing back from other departments. And, and the staff that we have are doing an absolutely amazing job. But we've worked with Oregon Health Authority and the region to decrease some of the questions that we ask, to make the interview process a little bit faster. And we are also decreasing our notifications to all employers. We are going to be asking cases that they let their employers know. But if, and we are going to be doing prioritized follow-up of high-risk settings, such as long-term care facilities, congregated living, and a number of other, another, a number of other places. But we really, at this point, unfortunately, need to ask our citizens to, when they know that they've had a positive test, tell their close contacts and ask their close contacts to quarantine. They will hear from public health. But the more individuals can cooperate with us on giving them, giving us good contact information, but also let their contacts know and their employers know early, as soon as they know, then, then people can self-quarantine and be, stay safe and being, and decrease spread while they're waiting for the, for the call from public health. So it's an unfortunate time right now. I do think that we are getting things under control. I think that taking a pause to try to decrease spread is going to get us back to where we can look towards a future of isolation and quarantine, working to stop the spread. So I leave that as my last slide. Go on to the next one. I know that I don't have a lot of good information to share with you here today, but I do think it's really important for you to understand the challenges that we in our community and in the public health department are facing. So I'm happy to take questions.
I don't see any questions at the moment. I want to thank you for your hard work also. You, Nancy, and the team have done an incredible job. I appreciate, appreciate that you're working with the other medical folks at Clackamas, I mean, at Washington, Multnomah County, on the effort to look at how we can move forward safely. But I also want to say how important it is that people follow the rules, wear their masks. Masks, now they have kind of made some changes, that masks not only protect the other person, they protect you. And we just need to continue to be vigilant so we can put this behind us. And frankly, it's not up to Dr. President or the governor whether we move forward safely. It's up to all of you to follow the rules, wash your hands, social distancing, wear your mask, and be as careful as you possibly can, because frankly, if we go much further and businesses have to roll back, this economy is going to be in dire straits to move in the future. It already is, but it's going to be so much worse. So again, thank you, and Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. President, for your presentation. It's sombering news to see what's taking place around Oregon and the country and so forth. And I, I just want to at least convey to everyone that I think what's the most important metric of those six there, I think that has guided me, that I believe in, is really our, our hospital capacity, and that is diminishing. That's probably the most critical factor that we all need to be cognizant of. And so that's what, I think that's the one that concerns me. I think that's the one that's gotten validity as far as of those six metrics. It's always puzzling to me to look at those metrics sometimes, and knowing that yesterday, I think Multnomah County had close to 294, I think, is, or close to 300, I think it was 294 cases yesterday. And, and to see that they're got more favorable numbers in that, that matrix of metrics, if you will. Where I, it's up to the state to change the metrics, but it would certainly like, be nice to see something that is more representative. So my question is, how, we have somewhat of a regional hospital system. So when I looked at the hospitalization trends on the chart that you provided, it seems like we're seeing a spike in Clackamas County. Is that, is that, and I guess the same question came up here recently in the governor's call with the spike in another county, that neighboring, that neighboring another state, that they saw a spike because a lot of the hospital capacity had to be in Oregon, so they were, they saw that spike. So how much of that regionally is people that are, maybe if, if Multnomah County, let's say hospitals are full, and they're spilling over to be using Clackamas, are those numbers actually of increased hospitalization measured by just their, just flat, literally their capacity? Or where the people actually reside? For example, if someone in Multnomah County is in a Clackamas hospital, does that reflect on our numbers? Or does that reflect on their numbers?
Yeah, thank you. That's a really good question. So I do get some, I get daily updated reports on hospital capacity. And I, it gets, there's a lot of sort of minutia in the reports, so I think it gets challenging to present, you know, a graph to you. But we have reports that look at staffed bed capacity in the region. And our hospital region is the tri-county Portland metro region plus Tillamook and Latzep Counties, I believe. So we look at the hospitals in that region and how many staffed beds they have filled and unfilled and with COVID patients versus non-COVID patients. That's hospital beds and ICU beds. And that has overall been increasing. There is, there is capacity, but it's getting strained. And we are seeing that. We also get a report that may not be every day, but maybe once a week, about the county of residents of individuals who are in hospital beds and ICUs. I can't present that to you very well. It's, you know, when you look at the Clackamas County residents who are hospitalized or in ICUs, we're looking at really, you know, it's been a number that you can count on two hands, 10 or less. So that's in the, in the ICU beds. And so small changes in that do have large percentage points. At the same time, and so, and so in that way, it's, it is. At the same time, and so, and so in that way, it's, it is somewhat more looking at the hospital capacity in the region that is more of my concern, because of those ten people or twelve people, if it goes up to fifteen, it's still up to our regional capacity as to whether they can get a hospital bed or not. I, I think that there is transfer from other areas of the state for our high acuity patients, not as much for the COVID patients as for other, you know, other patients needing level three trauma care or various other reasons that do affect the hospital bed capacity in our region, because we have specialized centers. And I, I think the details of that again are, are challenging to really parse out. The bottom line is that we have increased cases, we are seeing increased hospitalizations that would be expected after case now, case numbers. Clackamas County is not only having young, healthy people with case rises, it's, it's rising throughout the population, and that increases our risk of needing hospital beds. And that our, our hospitals are working on what contingency plans need to be put in place at different points in time based on their capacity.
Yeah, and I'm sure all of us who sought some kind of either testing or medical procedures, I mean, I, you know, whether I go to have a procedure or my wife has a procedure in Washington County or Multnomah County or wherever it may be, we go where the services are, it works. So I think that's one good thing about our regional system. And we just got to recognize that we're, we all have to recognize that where the services are or the beds are is where they are, and we're there to, they're there to help people and not really where they reside. So but it is concerning, I think some, if, if there is a shortage in the state, and I know that we are part, our region as far as a hospital region is part, all the way to the coast. So we're part of that. So it, it's, it'd be nice to, to know what those regional numbers maybe look like if, if hospital capacity becomes more more of a problem than it already is, or a challenge more than is, is already. Have some kind of sense of what our regional capacity is. But I'm, I'm sure that stat's on the OHA somewhere. What, OHA website?
Yes, I don't, I can't direct you to exactly where it is right now, but I'll find that and get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Anya?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Paul mentioned that we were on a call, I believe it was with the governor this week, and she talked about cases spiking. I believe this is right, someone correct me if I'm misspeaking, because we get so much information coming at us. But cases spiking in, I believe it was Idaho, and they were using our hospital beds in Oregon. I'm just wondering if you have any more detail on that? I'm just curious, and if you don't, I can, you know, get information later, but that, that was concerning to me when I had heard that.
Yeah, I, I actually don't have any details on that, Nancy. I don't, I don't know if you do. Sorry. No, I don't at this time, but we can, we can check that out.
Does, uh, hospital capacity include the veterans' hospital?
Don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure it does. I know that the VA has been active in regional healthcare, health system discussions. So we have a weekly Wednesday call with local public health and infection control members from all of the, from hospital systems, and the VA participates. I do know that in times of surge, they have taken non-VA patients as well. So I, I don't have the details of, of that capacity or exactly how it's pulled out of my report, but again, I can, I can try to get that to you. And I believe, I believe so.
Okay, Ken. Your mic.
Thank you. And semi-observation sent me a question. With the increase in cases nationally, and as rapidly as is occurring, the, the beds are not the only real issue. While it's a major marker, before this national dramatic increase, you were able to move people from one geographic location to another, from Utah to New York City, to help with the outbreaks in those different locations. With this happening as rapidly as it is, having the people to actually service the patients in those beds is liable to become a serious problem, and I'm wondering, are you prepared for, or is the region prepared for that?
So it is an issue, yes.
Yes, it is.
You know, I, I think that it's a, it's a good observation that the, the rise of, of cases affects everybody. You know, healthcare workers are people too who have exposures in their personal lives potentially as well as, as at work, although wearing, you know, appropriate PPE sometimes can make the patient care the least concerning exposure. But, so a decrease in staff who are needing to quarantine is a challenge. I think that there are some leniencies around quarantine based on risk of exposure that are being discussed. I believe on, on NPR this morning, there was a, I heard about Minnesota allowing people who have tested positive to continue to work if they're asymptomatic. So people around the country are having to figure out what, what risks are tolerable. And the, the number of people who are exposed, who need to isolate or quarantine affects, you know, many economics sectors as well in our, in our community. And so staffing is one of our biggest concerns as far as overall hospital capacity, which is why the capacity reports that we get are based on staffed beds. So there may be beds that are empty, but they're not going to be reported as available if they don't have staff for them, and that is, that's taken into account. We have medical reserve corps, we have, you know, volunteer community networks. However, at the same time, many people who are in that are, have, are in, are themselves in an age range that puts them at higher vulnerability themselves, and their safety is, is important as well. If the entire country is dealing with staffing shortages, then we don't necessarily have you know, help from outside to call upon. So are we prepared? I don't know. Are we talking about it? Yes. Are, do we, are there multiple plans that could be evaluated and, and looked at? And on, then we do have our crisis care guidelines that the region came up with as well, that that are, are there and available to use. I don't know if that answers your question. It's a concern, yes.
Well, it just emphasizes the fact that even, even more so that you sure don't want to catch this, because it's specialties that can deal with epidemiology and lungs and all of those other things that are needed in dealing with this disease, and it's, my suspicion is we don't have enough people around the country to do that if we get overloaded.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. President. Thank you, Nancy. Gary, do you have anything else for these folks?
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on then, commissioners, to your first presentation today. A Veterans Day presentation and proclamation. Of course, Veterans Day was yesterday, but we will still honor that today. We have Erica Silver from Health, Housing and Human Services to give a presentation, and then Commissioner Humberson will present the proclamation. Go ahead.
Greetings, commissioners and staff. My name is Erica Silver. I'm a human services manager with Clackamas County Social Services, and my colleague Jennifer Harvey, I believe was also going to join us. So maybe Christina could make sure she's in here. Okay, so could you bring up the presentation, please? I have some wonderful updates for you on all of the work that the county is doing with your support to make sure that we support our veterans here in Clackamas County. Next slide, can I advance it? I'm not used to, okay. So our veteran numbers overall have gone down a little bit. Twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven. Our known homeless veterans as of last week are fifty-nine, and I also want to acknowledge that veterans in our county workforce in virtually every team, every department, every area of Clackamas County are making very meaningful impacts, and oftentimes their training that they received while they were in the military is directly contributing to their success. Next slide, please. So wanted to remind you of the goals for veterans in Clackamas County in Performance Clackamas. The goal is zero unsheltered homeless veterans, easy and effective access to benefits through County Veteran Service Office, employment training and education for living wage jobs. Next slide, please. In our Clackamas County Veteran Service Office, we have four accredited veteran service officers. As you know, they go through intensive training every single year to make sure that we're up to date on all of the latest, and it's certainly been a few new processes this year with the remote work environment. There was a slightly lower number of veterans and family members that we met with over this last year, not too significant, about a hundred and fifty less. So we met with eighteen hundred and fifty-four veterans and family members. All of this is being done remotely. One thousand one hundred and thirty-eight compensation claims were filed, seven hundred and forty-four claims were granted. Many more of those claims will get granted, it's just that it takes the VA a little while to work through them. So those, that's not going to reflect any of the claims that were worked on in probably the last quarter of the fiscal year. Eleven point eight million dollars in new federal monetary benefits. That's also very consistent with our numbers from past years. Were generated by the Clackamas County Veteran Service Office. So continue to be a very important function to support our veterans, and we appreciate your support for that function. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn this one over to Jennifer Harvey.
Thank you, Erica. Good morning, commissioners. The Children, Family and Community Connections Employment Program served forty-three veterans last year. Twenty-four became employed, and we did have a seventy-five percent retention. That is our goal, that we can assist a veteran in stabilizing in their employment and provide services for ninety days following that first day to make sure we're working through those first-day jitters on the job. And we did have an average wage of seventeen fifty per hour, and that's for our last program year. We've listed our jobs down below, and we're working in a number of different sectors. One success that I did want to point out, we were working with a homeless Navy veteran at the beginning of July in twenty nineteen. That veteran was homeless and living in his car in the Canby area. A number of programs came to that veteran's support, and we were able to assist him in a number of different ways. He had formerly worked with at-risk youth in Alaska. And over our time in working with him, we were able to provide him with stabilization services so that he was able to attain employment with North Clackamas School District, also working with disadvantaged youth who were at risk. Another awesome success in that story is that he is now working also with Do Good and providing services for homeless veterans. So thank you for another opportunity to share with you some of the work that we're doing through the investment of Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So ending veteran homelessness, we've seen some great progress over the last year. We, within social services, our programs housed seventy-eight homeless veteran households, and that's a twenty-five percent increase over last year for a total of ninety-eight adults and fifteen children that were housed. The VASH vouchers administered by the Housing Authority, that total at the time that I wrote this was a hundred and twenty-one. Ninety-one were currently housed, that's a twenty-eight percent increase over last year. Eleven more vouchers are issued and just looking for housing. There's five on hold for Rosewood Station and eighteen still available. But since the time that I wrote this, an additional twenty-five VASH vouchers have been granted to Clackamas County. So we continue to make a really good progress, and I think that's also reflected in the fact that the known homeless veterans are reduced by thirty-nine percent from a year ago. So we may not quite be at that Performance Clackamas goal of zero, but every year we continue to make progress towards it. So again, to me, the words homeless and veteran should never go together, and we continue to make a lot of good strides towards that. There was also forty veteran households that were prevented from homelessness, and of course, we always want to do that whenever possible. Next slide, please. In the Veterans Village, twenty-five veterans were sheltered, six were exited to permanent housing, and the safety off the streets that the Veterans Village provides cannot be understated. There was also three women, nine elders, five people of color, and five with physical disabilities included in that twenty-five. And again, as you know, that project could never have happened without the support of the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide, please. The Clayton Moore Commons opened just about a year ago, and it's twenty-four unit veteran affordable housing. It's ended homelessness for many residents, and the Housing Authority and Do Good Multnomah continue to do a wonderful job with that property. Next slide, please. So how to contact the Clackamas County Veteran Service Office, the phone number and email and website is listed up here. If there's any members of the public that might be watching, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. We will try to answer all your questions, get back to you promptly, and help you earn the benefits that you earned through your military service. Next slide, please. And the Clackamas Veterans Workforce Program, again, same thing, do not hesitate to reach out. They do a wonderful job, as Jennifer so eloquently conveyed, and I think that is all. Next slide. Oh, if you're in a housing crisis, we now have also an online application of phone number and an email. And again, if there's veterans, we definitely do prioritize any help that we can provide. Next slide, please. Yeah, and so to me, every day should be Veterans Day. I'm very proud to work for a county that acknowledges the tremendous contributions and sacrifices of veterans and military families, and again, none of that would be possible without your support. So you have my heartfelt respect and appreciation, and turn it over to Commissioner for a proclamation as well.
First, first I have a couple of questions up for you. Sonya and Paul.
Erica, thank you. I have so appreciated every Veterans Day you've come and given an update, and it's been quite a journey to see the progress for veterans. So I'm just interested in, right now, we have VASH vouchers available, and they, I'm just curious, what are the barriers to getting those executed for veterans who are currently houseless in our community?
Well, there's a couple of barriers. But also, please note that the HUD VASH vouchers, the case management for that is through the Veterans Administration, so that's not under my direct control. But I will say that movements are happening a little bit more slowly just due to COVID and the remote work environment. I know that the VA has had some staffing challenges, as have a lot of places, and you would think that right now people would be multiple applicants for any open jobs, and that is true, but I also think that there are some people that are just in those vulnerable categories, and they're kind of hesitant. So I know they've been a little bit short-staffed, also with those HUD VASH vouchers. They have some pretty strict eligibility requirements, and so not all of the homeless veterans, like that fifty-nine that I had mentioned of the known homeless veterans, not all of those are actually eligible for those HUD VASH vouchers, so those are some of the factors.
Just a follow-up, can you let me know what some of- Just a follow-up, can you let me know what some of the eligibility barrier criteria are?
Well, they have to be literally homeless. They mostly have to meet the chronically homeless definition, which means long-term homelessness, one year continuous homelessness, or three episodes, I believe it's four episodes in the last three years totaling one year. And all of those have to be documented. And they also have to have a documented disability. And of course, they have to also have an honorable discharge and meet the federal definition of a veteran. And so that doesn't cover some people that served that were maybe National Guard, didn't see active duty, the same with Army Reserve. So not all the veterans that are included in that 59 number would even meet that definition of a veteran. So those are some of the answers.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. It really goes to show that there are definitely barriers and gaps in our system that hopefully the homeless services dollars that will come in online will be able to fill. And I appreciate the update. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and I also just want to note that the county itself has been funding internally a Veterans Rapid Rehousing Program. And then any of our HUD programs that are for veterans, we don't require that same level. So now that the Housing Authority is able to issue, we call the Move On Preference Vouchers again. We should also see some movement with our own internal programs. And then we can move people off into those preference vouchers that are doing pretty well and they don't really need the services anymore. And then that allows us to serve some of that 59 and bring that number down even lower. Because we don't put those same restrictions on that the VA does.
All right, Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Erica. I'll ask my question in a moment, but I just wanted just to build on and make one important point or just add some clarity in that what prompted us to pursue the Veterans Village as a transitional facility was that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Erica, but the way the rules are pretty well put in place, that if a veteran is identified as homeless and he finds some temporary housing, let's just say for three months, whether it's a home or an apartment or whatever it may be, but knowing it's temporary, that they're really not, no longer really eligible for housing or for a VASH voucher, as I understand it. And that if they are residing in the Veterans Village, which is transitional housing, which is not permanent housing, and they're really not in a, you know, basically as the VA sees it, they're not housed, they are still homeless in that setting, that their eligibility for a VASH voucher housing remains in place and not jeopardize all. And that's the whole purpose of setting up the transitional facility that we currently have. So I just wanted to emphasize that part of the success here and the benefit for our veterans is that we can kind of get around that loophole, if you will, and get them into permanent housing. And so I'm really proud of my colleagues, past and present, who have supported this. And Ken, when you came on, you took this, you know, I approached you and you took this on with a passion. And I appreciate your vigilance and tenacity in helping us carry this across the finish line and along with all my other colleagues as well. But you took this to heart and were able to help assist, get us to where we are today. My question that I have or concern, not really concerned, but just want to just point this out, is I've talked to the staff and some of the residents at the Veterans Village. I realize that some of them have come from outside of the area. And that's great. No matter where a veteran comes from, unhoused veteran is a responsibility for us all. And to see them get in a better place. But I just want to make sure that, my question is that if because of the draw of the Veterans Village and people coming to it knowing we have limited capacity there, we're not going to, our eligibility for increased VASH vouchers won't be compromised. Let's just say that if a neighboring county doesn't have Veterans Village, they're not going to need to have as much demand if there's an influx of veterans coming in. So I just want to ask the question, is our ability to get an increase in VASH vouchers as time goes on compromised in any way? Or is it actually enhanced?
Yeah, so I'm going to answer this in a few different ways and happy to provide further clarification. So one fine point about the Veterans Village, and this is just some of the federal rules, as all of you know, don't always make perfect sense. But if we're calling it transitional housing, then people actually are not eligible. It has to be called transitional shelter. So and I was like, every single step along the way, we have to call it transitional shelter, but that's the exact reason why. And I understand the need to call it transitional because it sounds a little bit more long-term for the neighbors and for the local businesses. But from my way and anything kind of official that we put out, we call it a transitional shelter. And that is also backed up by the fact that the actual sleeping quarters do not have running water, you know, do not have bathrooms, do not have kitchens. So that kind of helps with that shelter designation. A lot of the other counties have what's called a grant per diem, which is a partially VA-funded shelter slash transitional housing. And it's funny because if people are in the grant per diem in both Washington County and Multnomah County, as well as Marion County, all have these, but we don't, then they are still considered homeless for the purposes of VASH. Since we don't have that grant per diem here, we do work really closely with those other counties. And a good number of veterans that are first identified homeless camping or on the street in Clackamas County will end up going to those GPD programs. And so it really is a regional effort to end veteran homelessness. And I don't see the Veterans Village as hurting that in any way. We do normally insist that people that are coming to the Veterans Village, even if maybe if they were sleeping in another county temporarily, they have to have some tie to Clackamas County. So either they grew up here, they used to work here, they went to school here, they have family here, some kind of a tie, they used to live here to Clackamas County. So that's going to be true for virtually all of the veterans in the village. I think if anything, having the village helps us to get more VASH vouchers because of the fact that we're, you know, we're able to actually locate people to move them into housing. So I hope I've answered all your questions.
Yeah, you have. And thank you for their clarification on shelter versus housing transitional-wise. So that's
It's just a wonky thing with the HUD rules.
It's a key term that people, a lot of people didn't understand. So I know we took some heat because people thought we weren't providing them the best. But actually, we were doing a good thing to get them in a better place.
Correct, a really good thing.
All right, Martha? Button this up. Martha?
Thanks for everything you do, Erica, because I know that we've been working on this for a while, a very long time. Do we still have someone? It may be difficult in the time of COVID, but at one point, we had staff that were literally going out in rural areas and around the county attempting to find veterans who were camped out somewhere or otherwise. Are we still able to do that? Or is that something that has been impacted by COVID and we can't do it anymore? Or can you?
Yeah. Great question. So we're very lucky, we still have Dave Denny. He's a 20-year retired Army MP, which means Military Police. So his training is impeccable. And I fully trust him to go into any situation and know how to handle himself and handle the other people. So he has been pulled into the Emergency Operations Center to an extent because his subtitle right now should be Mobile Shower Wizard because he just is really good mechanically and he understands how to run that thing in a way that almost nobody else does. But that being said, when COVID first started, we felt it was extremely important to make sure that we were getting out into those homeless camps, making sure that people had masks, making sure that people had hand sanitizer, making sure that people had even just water and soap so that they could follow the COVID-safe practices if they weren't able to or chose not to come inside to a motel. So we are continuing that outreach. We're really, now that we're coming into winter, you know, of course, it is really important to do that outreach so that we know who is in those camps, who is the most vulnerable, and hopefully be able to get them in either to some sort of a shelter or a motel for the winter. I know we'll be talking with you more about that in a couple of weeks.
Okay, Martha, are you done?
Yeah, I know I went, my phone interrupted for a minute because I'm on my iPad. I do have a follow-up. Are we working any connections with Camp Wethacun at this point in time? I mean, have we done outreach with them? Are we working with, you know, with the generals, the general that's there? Or is that something that we need to take a closer look at? We used to have a very close relationship with them.
Yeah, the National Guard helped us out for the first time at our Veterans Stand Down. That was held in January of 2020. And I probably should have made a slide about that, but I didn't. So we have some connection to them. There's also their family resource specialist that participates in the Veterans Advisory Council. There are some other areas where the state, I believe it has to go through the state, had put out an order for the National Guard to help with homeless veteran outreach. And I thought that was really creative. And, you know, if we were interested in pursuing that, I guess we should have that conversation. But
Okay.
I'd be, I mean, I'd be interested in offline what some of your ideas are.
That would be great because we really used to have a pretty close working relationship with them and they really added some capacity. And I want to make it clear, though, that I know that, you know, we're not talking about starting a new program or anything like that as much as relationally working more closely with the Guard, potentially Clackamas Community College and workforce. And I know that Clackamas Community College has gotten numerous awards for being one of the best community colleges for veterans.
No, absolutely. And they were the host, I'm sorry, I think I interrupted you.
No, no, you didn't.
They were the host for the Stand Down for the first time. And it was actually really great because the National Guard brought in quite a few people and they helped with not only safe meal serving, but also just the load-in and load-out and setup. It was really great. The main contact that we had over there, I believe, is still on activated duty right now. But I assume he'll be back at some point.
Thank you for that. Thanks.
All right, Ken, you have a proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclaiming November 11th, 2020 as Veterans Day in Clackamas County. Whereas regardless of how one feels about policies that lead to war, let there be no doubt that veterans serve with honor. They serve to make life better for others. They preserve our liberties and freedoms. And whereas not all veterans have seen war, but a common bond that they share is an oath in which they express their willingness to die defending this nation. And whereas perhaps most significant in preserving our way of life are the battles that America does not have to fight because those who wish us harm slink away in fear of the Coast Guard Cutter, the Navy aircraft carrier, the Air Force Fighter Squadron, the Marine Corps Fire Team, or the Army Soldier on Patrol. And whereas those of us gathered here to observe Veterans Day have already indicated our support for the outstanding men and women who have served our country. And whereas it is up to us to ensure that every veteran feels that his or her service to this country is appreciated by their fellow Americans. And whereas war is never anything to celebrate, but peace is. The peace in between horrific wars is brought to you mainly by our veterans. And whereas Veterans Day is for all who've served, while many veterans are humble, there is no such thing as insignificant military service. And whereas Clackamas County and the American Legion are dedicated to remembering the legacy of all veterans because what these men and women have done for us matters to America. And whereas Clackamas County is proud to partner with American Legion Post 180 to recognize and honor veterans who have served and are still serving our country so that all may pursue life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners declares November 11th, 2020 to be Veterans Day in Clackamas County and encourages all Clackamas County residents to observe the same. Dated this 12th day of November, 2020, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, Chair Jim Bernard, Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Humberton, Commissioner Savas, and Commissioner Schrader.
And thank you, Ken, and thank you for your service.
And I'd like to thank Erica and Jennifer in particular for the work that they have been doing. I'm sorry, we'll no longer be there to work with you on these things, but please keep up the good work. And I don't see Paul's picture in front of it, but Paul, thank you very much for the acknowledgement. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Gary, what's up next?
If you could call for a motion to approve that proclamation.
Appreciate that, Gary. I'd entertain a motion to approve the Veterans Day proclamation.
Oh, sorry, Ken, go ahead. You should do it, not me. Let me second it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Veterans Day proclamation.
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve the Veterans Day proclamation. Any further discussion? Be none. Christina, would you please poll us?
Absolutely. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberton?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you very much. And Gary, what's up next?
Next is the Consent Agenda, and we'll have Christina read that, please.
For today's consent agenda, health, housing, and human services, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Clackamas Women's Shelter, and the Community Development Division ESG funding for the CWS Homeless Shelter, approval of a federal subrecipient grant amendment number one to the Clackamas Women's Services to improve criminal justice response to domestic violence, approval for a revenue agreement with Care Organ for Dental Health Expansion, approval of amendment number six to intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to provide grant funding up to a not-to-exceed amount, approval of intergovernmental agreement with ODOT Contract Number 34384 for the Foster Road Paving at Highway 212, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with University of Oregon for an AmeriCorps member, approval of a contract with Sustainability Solutions Group Worker Cooperative for the Climate Action Plan Project, approval of a contract with Murray Smith Incorporated for the Stafford Road Improvements Project, Palwado Way to Rosemont Road, under elected officials, approval of a previous business meeting minutes, request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter an intergovernmental agreement with North Clackamas School District for school resource officers in the 2021 through 2023 school years, under technology services, approval for a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Wholesale Networks LLC for dark fiber connections, and under finance, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between And under finance, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas 800 Radio Group for Clackamas County Public Safety Radio System Replacement Project C800 Bond Funding. And that's your consent agenda.
Thank you very much Christina. And with that, does any commissioner want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Hey Jim, I don't want to remove any item, but there's one item on there. It's a for dealing with rent assistance and using our COVID dollars and it's quite extensive and Gary, if it's not too much to ask, and maybe it is, but I would love it when, I know that on issues next Tuesday, we're going to be talking about warming shelters and turnkey project. If we could just get in more, a little bit more information, a little update when our staff come to talk to us on Tuesday, I would love that. It's quite the meaty consent agenda item, which is really, really important during, during this COVID time especially. So that's all. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
We moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda. Any further discussion? With that, I'll turn it over to Christina for a roll call. Roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberton?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously and I'm going to turn it over to Gary for, oh no. I guess we're going to turn it over to Christina for a public comment.
Chair Bernard, now is the time for general comment related to any county business. If you're having a comment related to county business, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're calling in by phone and want to give comment, please hit star nine. I will give people a few seconds. I already see a couple of hands up, so we'll start there. Uh, looks like Tanya Hunt is going to be the first one. Tanya, I'm going to bring you in. Please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Tanya Hunt. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Safe Kids Coalition here in Clackamas County. You all are familiar with our work and have been such a great partner over the last many years, but particularly the last several months as we worked hard on the children's safety levy. I know you join me in disappointment around those results. We believe that Clackamas County continues to be very supportive of children, particularly children facing abuse, neglect and trauma. We think that these results, while disappointing, don't really reflect the hearts of Clackamas County. But I want to assure you that the Safe Kids Coalition is digging in to those results and will be continuing to work together, particularly to study what it is voters might have had concerns about, how those returns and results inform us moving ahead. And we look forward to sharing that with you in the near future so that we can really inform the decision makers in this county and work together all the more as we work together as a coalition. Thank you again for all you've done and all you continue to do. And I know that you will continue to support kids in this county and join with us in that work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up is going to be Rose Fuller. I'm going to bring you in, Rose. If you want to unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Tanya. Rose Fuller, Northwest Family Services. I live in Clackamas County, work in Clackamas County. And I too am speaking about the Safe Kids Coalition. And I really wanted to reiterate our gratitude for your support during the campaign. We are incredibly appreciative. And though we were saddened that we didn't win, we really didn't lose because what we found is despite the pandemic, civil unrest, wildfires, and an economic crisis, collectively with your support, we built a broad-based coalition committed to supporting children affected by abuse in the collect. And we raised awareness in the community and that's not a loss. So I don't think we have to feel that efforts were in vain. And as you know, the purpose of the levy was to double the capacity of community-based organizations to serve the ever-increasing needs that our children and youth face. These needs have not gone away. In fact, we see that the demand is only increasing. We continue to address what we can, but we were already at capacity, but we see increases in abuse, neglect, violence, and mental health crises as well as substance use issues that I'm sure you're all aware of. The daily circumstances that our staff face are daunting and truly heartbreaking. Some of the youth we serve are referred from the schools. Some of our staff are embedded virtually in the schools and we serve, receive referrals from the students themselves. And some of the students come to us on their own. But I just want to again say that we remain and we have found further strength in developing our coalition that has grown and broadened. And we want to, and we will, as Tanya mentioned, because it's a broader coalition, we want to bring you sort of the findings and, you know, what our expectations are in terms of the need. The need is never greater. I'm going to give you just one really quick example anecdotal. At Northwest Family Services, we work with children impacted by incarceration. You know, this year, last year, we served 65 youth intensively and that's from middle school through graduation. We had to reduce that number by 40 because of funding issues. And that's just one itty bitty thing. So we know that he's there. Again, I am so grateful for you and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose.
We'll move on. It looks like Rebecca. I brought you in. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Rebecca Nichols and I'm the interim executive director for Children's Center. Thank you for your time today and thank you so much for your support for the children's safety levy. We know that the children's safety levy was very specific in outlining services that would be funded. But we're also very aware that there are many additional services that children and families across Clackamas County desperately need. All of us in the Safe Kids Coalition are committed to continued partnership with the Board of County Commissioners to identify those needs and any opportunities and resources for the kids in our community. As we plan for our next steps, we ask for your partnership and support to help the coalition continue to do this work in a collaborative manner that truly meets the needs of all kids and families in the county. We look forward to talking about options with you all further and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Rebecca. Christina, is there any email?
Um, we do have an email. I do also show that Robin Christian, her hand was up and now it's down. So I'll, I'll go ahead and read my email and Robin, if you want to speak, just go ahead and raise your hand. Oh, there it is. Let me go ahead and bring Robin in. Uh, Robin, you can unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you Christina. Hi, I'm Robin Christian and apparently raising and lowering my hand is a superpower of mine. I'm the executive director of Kossev Clackamas County and on behalf of the steering committee and the whole coalition, the whole Safe Kids Coalition, I really want to express our thanks to the Board of County Commissioners as well as agency leaders, law enforcement, business community, faith community, and many, the many other individuals who supported us during this time. I know it was a little bit of a push for the commissioners. Gary, I remember you thinking, August, huh? But you made it happen. Everybody worked really hard. And I'd like to echo what my colleague said. We're not taking this as a message from the community that they don't support these services. This just might not have been the right time. The best thing to come out of this is that the steering committee members will continue to work in coalition, will broaden our coalition to other nonprofits in Clackamas County. And we will continue to work to make sure that we can provide the services that we know that children need. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robin.
Simon Fulford next. I brought you in. Simon, go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Okay, thanks. I, I can't, Simon Fulford, Executive Director of Parrot Creek Child and Family Services. I will say ditto to everything that my colleagues and peers said before. Really want to echo their sentiment of our appreciation for the commission's support and the county, the staff team's support. I know we gave the commissioners a heart of service award for their direct love and support for Parrot Creek, but we could have said that heart of service was just as much for the children and families of Clackamas County. So thank you for that. Oh, thank you, Jim. And I, and I just, I think strongly echo that this levy, you know, the feedback I was getting through other networks was how powerful it was in that it was extremely targeted to a very specific need. And I know that other counties and associates of ours were kind of watching the response and how that would move forwards. And so it, it 100% is not a lost effort. It's actually built this huge coalition. And as I think Robin just said, or was it Rebecca? It's not just the nonprofit sector, it's business community, faith community, and, and a lot of others. So we have that momentum behind us. We need to do a deep dive into, you know, kind of what the feedback is and, and where we can improve on that messaging. And then how do we best respond to the needs of children and families in Clackamas County, which is not going away and is actually getting a lot more acute. So we all look forward to partnering with the, with the commission over the weeks, months and years ahead. And again, thank you for your belief in everything we do and therefore your belief in children and families here in the county.
Thank you, Simon. All right, Christina, I don't see anybody else's hand risen, raised. So you have an email?
I do. I have one email from Kevin Moss. He's from Damascus, also a former employee of ours. It says, "Good morning, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. I want to write and say thank you for passing the consent item E.1 IGA amendment with the C800 Radio Group today. It was a pleasure for me to work on the drafting of this amendment with County Council, Treasurer's Office and Finance while serving as the county administration lead when I was with the county. I wanted to extend my thanks to John Hartstock, Sue Scobert, and all the fire and police chiefs that make the group for their support. They are dedicated to helping protect all residents of the county. I also want to thank County Council Attorney Jeff Muns and Treasurer Brian Nava for being great resources to make language transparent and easily understood to the public. Finally, I wish to thank Deputy Finance Director Krista Bosserman-Wolff for a great, for being a great partner and leader in the working of this project on behalf of the county. Thank you very much. Keep up the great work."
Well, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. And we'll turn, oh, go to the county administrator for any updates. Gary Smith?
Yes, thank you Chair. Two updates for you today, Commissioners. First, our Health, Housing and Human Services Department has been awarded 25 additional vouchers for the Foster Youth to Independence Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This program provides housing assistance and supportive services to young people who have a child welfare here, who have a child welfare history, who are at risk of or are experiencing homelessness. Clackamas County received its first funding for this new federal initiative late last year and again in the spring. So this is our third award of these vouchers. So thank you to our Health, Housing and Human Services staff for applying for and for helping implement this program. Next, more success with our Safe Connections Program. This program provides supervised visitations of children for families who have experienced domestic violence. It is funded through a federal grant from the Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women. Our county has developed a set of policies and procedures to implement this program. The U.S. Department of Justice has been so impressed with our work here at Clackamas County that they have invited our staff to give a presentation to others at a national training on how we are implementing this Safe Connections Program. So even though this program is not even launched yet, we have gotten national recognition as a leader in this area. Thank you to Amanda McVeigh and Sarah Van Dyke, our employees in Health, Housing and Human Services, Children, Family and Community Connections Division for their work in developing this program. That is my update for today, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioner Communications next and Ken, you're up first.
I celebrated Veterans Day yesterday. That's all I have today.
All right. Thank you. Martha? You're on mute.
Ken and I were together celebrating Veterans Day.
Martha?
Uh, yes, I do apologize. There is a NACO meeting going on right now. And so I am actually going to get off this meeting because they're talking about some pretty significant things that we need to be aware of. It's community, economic and workforce development. So thank you for that. And I am going to leave our business meeting a little early. Have a great weekend, colleagues. And move on to the next Zooming, Zooming experience. Okay. Thanks, guys. Bye bye.
Tanya?
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Yes, so yesterday, being Veterans Day was, I think it's different for all of us because we didn't have the events to go to. And I know over the years that I've been a commissioner, it's always been really inspiring to be with all of our community members focusing and just really appreciating our veterans. So yesterday was really different. I stayed home and I watched the Oregon Veterans, Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. They did an online celebration at 11:00 AM on Facebook. It was excellent. That is there on the Facebook page for anyone to go and watch. It highlighted the importance of focusing on veterans every day and not just Veterans Day. It's very, very important. I just wanted to say personally, Veterans Day is very, very important to me. And I have a couple of pictures Christina has for me to, to put up. This is my daddy, Elmer T. Paul, Air Force. He was a bombardier. And he was served in World War II and the Korean War. He was actually shot down in the Pacific Ocean, saved four of his airmen onto a raft and was rescued after three days. And my daddy worked as a produce buyer for Safeway. And really special to me, I spent every weekend with him traipsing through the fields. He died when I was far too young. I was just 20, about 22, 23 years old when he passed away. And so it was a real loss. I didn't really have the maturity to get all the stories from him that I wish I would have done. But he was loved by all. And I have another picture that Christina will put up. And as you can see, he very much was full of life and and in his service to the military, had lots of friends and was very, very loved. And I just wanted to share that in honor of Veterans Day.
Thank you, Tanya. Paul?
Yeah, well, yeah, Veterans Day is always an emotional time for me. And you know, I remember I was nine years old. I went to work at the Long Beach Naval Hospital and saw and worked and met a lot of people that have been through a lot of trauma in, in the war. So I always have a deep appreciation. It's always a sombering time and day. I too missed going to all the events where we honor our veterans around the county. I, I thought it was a great virtual experience yesterday. So I'm, I'm grateful that that at least had an opportunity for us to recognize and participate some way in honoring our veterans. I'm not a veteran and, you know, quite a few members of my family are or have or were. I have one uncle alive, Uncle Steve, who is a World War II veteran. And just want to, you know, just acknowledge all the veterans and all their experiences. We can't even fathom what is in the minds of each individual veteran that served or had a traumatic event, or their families who also went through a lot of grief and hardship during the wars. So I, it's, it's always a deep, sombering thing for me, but also on the bright side, we got to recognize that, you know, But also, on the bright side, we got to recognize that, you know, they did something great for our country and protected our country in those values, those virtues. And what we stand for as a nation are incredibly important. So, and without all the service through all the years, decades, hundreds of years of service protecting our country to make it what the great nation it is, you know, we wouldn't be here today. So thank you all, each and every veteran, for our freedom and for maintaining our country despite our difficulties, despite our differences, making it the great nation it is. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would also like to thank our vets for the work they do. I'd also like to say, actually, I'd like to thank my wife's son. Is in the U.S. Air Force. He received the U.S. Air Force International Affairs Excellence Award. There's only one given, and there's a great little statement in here. His efforts were so great that the Vice Chief of the Air Force invited him to refine the SAFIA-sponsored Political Military Affairs Fellowship Impact, impacting one of the service's premier developmental education programs. So Major Collin, very proud of you. With that, have a safe, healthy, oh wait. And please, wear your mask. We're adjourned.